Okay, we're going to call the Franklin Regional School Board Directors Committee, the whole meeting to order. We're in executive session from 6:45 to 7:30 for personnel contractual and legal issues. Superintendent's report, Dr. Prano.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by congratulating our boys swim team, specifically our relay teams, who this weekend came home with PIAA gold and silver in those relays. Exciting. It was fun to watch and a great performance. And we also had some strong individual performances with Aiden Bunker and Holden Thomas, as well as with third and fourth respectively in their events, as well as Peyton Blakely, who took, I think, 13th in her event. The events are actually running through my mind, but overall, a great performance. So I want to take this opportunity to congratulate them. And as we have in the past, when we have PIAA champions, we bring them to the board. We are looking to do that in the future. So, but in the meantime, I could not let this go without congratulating them for their performance. That being said, we have another long superintendent's report this evening, so I'm going to begin by turning it over to Dr. Sanamot to recognize the middle school students of the month.
Once again, thanks so much for having us. We really appreciate this every month. And our students of the month for the month of February are granted students of the month in the area of curiosity. So, we have already covered all of our five Cs, but what we believe at the middle school is that in order to be able to think critically, you have to be curious. And so, we like to look for those students who are exhibiting curiosity. And in order to do that, I'd like to bring up our grade eight student of the month, Grace Clemstein. Our grade seven student of the month, Shion Lee. And our grade six student of the month, Thomas Son. We actually had a tie in eighth grade, but Mateo Robinson could not make it tonight, so hopefully we'll get to see him at another time. And then coming up for this month in March, we're looking for students who are exhibiting integrity. So, we'll be happy to see you next month with those students.
Congratulations, kids.
Next, next, we have Mrs. Pope, Mr. Curran, with some high school recognitions.
We are bringing today three students. The first two students that we're going to pay recognition to are our students of the nine weeks. These students are nominated by their teachers based on quite a few different areas of their character. And then, the students' names are blacked out of the nominations and given to our students in the Pay It Forward Club. The Pay It Forward Club then goes through and decides which students they feel as though really represent Franklin Regional. So, it's a bit of a teacher and a student nomination. Our grade nine nomination is James Templeton. You made it! Wonderful! James just came back from the baseball trip, so we weren't sure if he would make it here tonight. The write-up that James received highlighted quite a few things, so I want to at least bring out some of those shining star pieces of James' character. James arrives to class every day with a smile on his face and an eagerness to learn. He is friendly and makes a point to greet his teachers and his peers on a daily basis. He plays a very active role in class because he volunteers and is eager to participate in the day's lesson. James' strong work ethic has been apparent all year, and he continues to excel while balancing his schoolwork and extracurricular activities. Congratulations, sir.
One of which, I'm guessing you just came back from, like, recently from Florida.
And our grade 10 nominated student is Alexis Smith. And I'll give you a highlight of Lexi's write-up as well. Alexis is such a sweet girl who is always willing to help her peers. She has a great work ethic and takes pride in all that she does. She is a true asset to her classes based on her willingness to participate. Alexis is the first person to say, "I'll do it," when nobody else is volunteering. Her maturity, creativity, and positive energy make her a great leader for her peers and within the school as a whole.
Congrats, Lexi.
So, a theme that runs through all of our award winners from the high school tonight is that of work ethic and dedication. And this student is certainly no exception to that. We actually have another student we're bringing forth to the board tonight to recognize for earning another associate's degree from Westmoreland County Community College. It's a great honor to recognize Grant Gibson for his hard work and dedication and absolutely awesome accomplishment. So, Grant, why don't you come on up here?
Grant, if I'm not mistaken, I believe when we spoke, we're looking at possibly, was it Pitt and Florida State? Is that correct? And what are you interested in possibly going to study? I know the answer to this, but I'll let you share a little bit.
Put them up closer to the microphone, because nobody can hear.
Come on over here. Sorry. What are you going to study again? Thank you, Mr. Yen.
I'm going to go study computer science, and then, once I'm in college, I'm probably going to specialize into something more specific.
Congratulations to all three of you. Great job.
Oh, yes. So, next up, I have Mrs. Malucci and Mrs. Smith, who are going to talk about their work at the intermediate school on MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, and give you a progress report on what's going on and what that looks like at our intermediate school. Last month, we had the primary school, and this month, we have Mrs. Malucci with the intermediate school.
Good evening. I'm Megan Malucci. I am the MTSS intervention coordinator for the intermediate building, and I'm excited to be here tonight. I talked to Dr. Prano about this program and why it's so important, and that's the message I'm going to convey to you tonight, and I hope that I can articulate that for you clearly. Dr. Delp, you have the slides. So, first of all, I'd like to talk about the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered systems of support. And what we do is we work at the intermediate at both reading and math, both levels. The goal with MTSS is truly to help to focus in on skills for students, ensure fidelity, ensure equity, and make sure that every child has the opportunity to get the good stuff. We have everything based on standards and our curriculum, but sometimes, students may have some difficulties. In order to meet their needs, MTSS is there to support them. I am the MTSS for the building, and so, as an interventionist, what I do is I look at data, a lot of data, thousands and thousands of points of data, to determine where our needs are. Sometimes, MTSS means I work with students that need enrichment. Sometimes, it means that I work with students that have significant needs, but I work at both ends, and it's equity. So, we can move to the next slide. I'd like to say that in working with MTSS, we call this the pyramid of MTSS and tiers of support. So, I just wanted to explain it to you a little bit, just so you could see how it works. And Dr. Buffon has been such a wonderful support to me this year, and he and I work side by side. Unfortunately, he was not able to come tonight. He wasn't well. He's very sorry that he couldn't be here, but we worked so hard to make sure that the message would be clear to you, and so, I want to make sure to convey that. When you look at the tiers and the systems of support, the first level, the tier one, is core instruction. It's what all students receive in the classroom. It's based on standards, targets, and our core curriculum. Every student receives it. Then, we have the tier two and the tier three. And you might wonder, well, how do we get to that level? We use universal screeners. I know you're all familiar with STAR, because I've been to different board meetings and talked about STAR with you. We also have DIBELS, which is another way to assess the reading. When I'm looking at the data through those universal screeners, I can then determine that some of the students might need some tier-two intervention. Tier-two intervention can still be met in the classroom. We have a wonderful schedule, and in our schedule is a time called Panther Power Time. That's a time to address needs. Teachers all have kidney-shaped tables in their classrooms. Students can sit around those tables, and they can work with the teachers on tier-two support level. It's a little bit more than that core instruction. It's a little deeper, but it's not foundational necessarily. The tier three, this is for very few students, but again, I look at that universal screener, I look at the data, and there's always a cut score. There's a cut score that I determine that these students need intensive intervention. Intensive intervention means foundational planks. When I'm looking at data, I am looking at the most foundational planks possible. So, for example, in math, I'm looking at addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, and the ability to solve problems in that area. STAR gives us about 16 data points. I'm looking at that one strand and creating a cut score to determine which students need those interventions. And then, we use research-based tactics to ensure that they have success and fidelity, because the data has to be looked at and then worked upon. So, with those students, it's kind of exciting, because kids that might be reluctant learners in math and reading aren't necessarily feeling like that anymore. They come bounding into these green open spaces that we have at the intermediate, wonderful open spaces with whiteboards and flexible seating, and it's kind of a special spot. It's not a space where they're feeling like, "I'm in this structured classroom," and it's a little more flexible. And so, they're excited, and they come in ready to learn. And we're seeing wonderful success as a result of that, and that's everything. As far as I'm concerned, a little bit of growth is growth, and success will breed success. And so, with that, we say, "All right, we have these kids in a really good place." Now, these are not in place as a firm and permanent way. It is flexible. So, after a benchmark assessment, which is every student takes in our building, I am then able to make flexible groupings. And then, we just completed a progress monitoring that happened in March. Again, I look at the data, and we flex those groups. Some of my kids that were tier-three are back into the classroom for tier-two. Some of the kids that were tier-two might be working with me a little bit in tier-three. Sometimes, there'll be a kid that was in tier-one that might need a little extra support, too. Those groupings change and are flexible. But when working with different experts in the field, people like Dr. Dea Jackson, who's really the head of research in Washington DC for MTSS, and works with Vanderbilt University, and I attended one of her webinars, and then afterward, reached out to her, and I thought, "I'll never hear from her." She has been a constant contact with me. She helps me to create those cut scores, to say, "Here's the score that we're really aiming toward." In most cases, it might be a score of 60, 60% out of 100. If a child on a universal screener is less than a 60%, then we need to intervene. And maybe, it's tier-three, and maybe, it's tier-two. But then, we do a lot of different progress monitoring with those students, once a week in tier-three, every other week in tier-two. And therefore, we can create those groupings to meet the needs of our students. Growth, however, is what we're looking for. We want every child to be able to have what they need for foundational planks. In reading, I'm looking at decoding, being able to take off affixes from words, and look at the base word, and find the meaning behind it, and then, read a passage with those same words in it. And just as an example, with one of the groups that I did for reading, we looked solely at suffixes and prefixes and took the affixes off, looked at those base words. There were 33 words like that in one passage in ReadWorks, which is a research-based program. And Matt Burns, who's an expert in the field of reading, University of Minnesota, he is, he endorses ReadWorks as a fantastic way to help students foundationally in reading. So, we utilize the affixes, then we look at base words, and we read those same words in context. And it's meaningful, and it's purposeful, and the students are really growing, amazingly growing. And so, looking at the data, I just wanted to quote Lynn Fielding, who is an expert in the field of growth and having catch-up for students. So, she says, this is maximum 34, "There is no point in testing," which is our universal screening, "if you don't look at the data, if you don't understand it, and you don't change." So, that's pretty much my role, is to look at that data, understand that data, and create the change for that data. So, that's how we work toward making these goals for these students and hitting those targets. Okay, for the next slide, this is just a snapshot, but this is tier-three intervention for six weeks, working solely on math foundational planks. The first bar, the red, tier-three in January, when we did our benchmark assessment that every student in the building took. And then, this same group, when we took our progress monitoring in March. In nine out of 10 cases, the students grew. And they didn't just grow, but in some cases, they grew up to 60 percentage points from the base. And that was foundational planks of operations of addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, and being able to problem-solve with them. And in the one case where there wasn't, it was 5%. We can still work with that. We can still work with that. What happens next? We look at what are our next steps, and how can we best meet the needs of these students? I am giving the teachers a lot of feedback in terms of how their kids are doing, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. But when I'm working with these tiered groups, it's very important that that work continue in the classroom, because I am one person, and I can't meet with those groups five days a week, every day, because there's a number of students in 4A and 4B and 5A and 5B. So, the teachers on the days that I can't can continue the work, and that's what they do. And so, I tell them, "Here are the strategies and the things that we're working on, and I want you to continue that work," and providing resources for them as well, so that they are also using the research-based materials. So, these are the accomplishments of MTSS as of Friday. I didn't have time to update it for today, but I would if I could have, because I was so close on my groups. So, this year, I did a little trivia with my family at home. How many groups do you think I've met with this year? Just for fun, you know, they didn't know. But I have met with 696 groups of students this year. 696. I wanted it to be 700 when I stood up here today. But I was working with data Friday and Monday, so I couldn't. But I did also work with a couple of kids on Friday, so I'm close, I'm really close. So, but it was 696. And the thing about it is, Dr. Buffon always said to me, "I hope you get my board reports every month." But Dr. Buffon had said to me, "Have a splash page when you're doing that board report, so you have those figures in front of you." And so, every time I'm with kids, I counted it up. And so, the data that I have up here, this quantitative data that I have, is because Dr. Buffon said, "Always make sure you're counting up what you're doing." Okay. So, 696, that was tier-three kids, some tier-two kids, some co-teaching that I've done, and also enrichment opportunities for students. 696. So, just let that resonate a little bit. I'm really proud of that. I really am. I want you to know, my feet are on the ground, my sleeves are rolled up, I'm in there, working hard to make sure these kids are getting the best that they can get, and that we see that growth. For collaboration, I am so impressed with our faculty and staff, and they are so wonderful to work with. And, you know, at the beginning of the year, I was like, "Oh, I hope that they'll buy into this. I hope that they will understand the value that this has." And they do. So, I've attended 65 PLC meetings, professional learning community meetings, this year, that's grades three, four, five. 17 SAP meetings, student assistant program meetings. I attend weekly MTSS meetings and monthly MTSS with administration. And Genda Fovio has been so wonderful from the very beginning. In August, we've met, you know, very consistently, supporting this program, helping us with the hard moves and really putting the message out there that this is important, and it really has been incredible, the response that we've received. And so, it's been great. And Dr. Delp has been supportive, and Dr. Smith has only been here a week, and he's already met with me twice, and we're meeting twice next week. So, you know, I can't say enough for that. And our principals in each of the buildings, we meet with administration once a month, and we always bounce ideas off each other and support each other. So, that's, it's huge. The collaboration is alive. The tools, we have Schoology as an LMS in our district, and I created a Schoology MTSS group. And in there, it's a hub for resources for our teachers in math and in reading. It's the research-based materials that I want our teachers to have access to, so that it's consistent. We have a consistent language between us. We're speaking the same language, and our goals are all set in that Schoology group. And with that being said, there are things in there, like surveys for the teachers, like, "How can I best meet your needs? What do you need from me? What more can I do? What resources are working for you?" We're working with things like three-act tasks in math, which are real-world application, but they are like a little webinar, so it's real. It's not like, "Look at the picture in the book. How many cups of water do you think it would take to fill that aquarium? There's an aquarium, we're filling it up." And you're problem-solving and critically thinking, and using accountable talk to discuss what you think the answer might be and why. So, those are the kinds of things that we're doing that are kind of outside the box, but are really powerful pieces of research-based materials that our students are just sticking their teeth into and loving. Again, all resources that I'm giving to our teachers and to our students are research-based. I will not deploy anything that is not. It will be done with fidelity, and it's always goal-driven. And then, reports. So, after I meet with the students, I make sure to send a report to their teachers. And in that report, it will say what the goals were, what the interventions were, the strategies that I used, and then, how they can then follow up the work in the classroom. Rob says, Dr. Buffon says, "This is the most powerful thing that I do, because it doesn't just stay with me, it will then go on with the teacher." Now, I was doing it every single day. Every day after I'd meet, I would send seven, eight, 10 reports. And Rob said, "Do it once a week." I said, "Well, okay. All right." But then, I still have trouble, because sometimes, I'll send a photograph, or a, "This really happened today. Look what we did." I can't really help but celebrate that. But, once a week, it is. So, I do send the summary reports specific to the teacher and to those students, so that they can continue the work when I am not with them. So, the success has been powerful. There is growth across the board in math and in reading. Every single tier-three is having success. Every grouping is having success. And that is everything that I can ask for. And it means that our kids are buying in, our teachers are buying in, there's support across the board, and it makes us proud. And with things being standards-aligned and based on curriculum, it's essential that our kids are able to hit those targets. The last piece I'd like to say is, when we're working with these kids, I'm trying to make them think about things a little bit differently. And maybe, for our reluctant learners, we can turn that around a little bit. One of my favorite authors in terms of math, Jennifer Bay Williams, is absolutely phenomenal in making kids think about math in a flexible way and not in a rigid way. And so, that's the message I'm trying to send to our kids, is that this is something fun, this is something different, and I want you to look at math through a different lens. And they're responding to that. So, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. Allison Smith is also here. She has a teacher perspective. She's a grade-five teacher. And so, we are here to answer any questions that you might have, but we're really proud of the work that we're doing, and I thank all of you so much for the support and for allowing me to speak tonight, to tell you why what we're doing is so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I have one question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned, and you probably even addressed this, besides the data and the reporting of like DIBELS and STARS as far as an assessment, foundational assessment, can it just also be a lesson that the teacher may have noticed something that the student struggled with to say, "Hey, could they push that through to you as well," besides just a foundational assessment of, say, STARS and DIBELS, just to get extra in that particular area that they may have been covering?
So, it's interesting, because at the beginning of the year, I'd say the first two, three months, because we're kind of building this from the ground up. You know, that's what we're doing. This is a whole new program. But at the first couple of months, I would work with those students, and I would assist them in whatever it was that the teacher would say, "They were having a little bit of trouble with this today." Then, I realized with just one of me and knowing the needs that we had, I thought, "I can then give the teachers strategies that they can utilize during the Panther Power Time to help those kids at that time, in real time." And then, there's no lost time, because by the time they get to me, I have to schedule them in, you know, we might lose that opportunity, that moment to learn. So, more of giving the resources to the teachers for that tier-two kind of intervention right off the core instruction.
Okay. So, basically, the different tiers, even to like a tier-three, would be based off of data and assessment only?
It is. It is. And those cut scores that I create to make sure that we don't have kids that are falling below our targeted goals.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. When a child progresses into those tiers, and you're, a lot of which you presented, you were talking about working with the teachers, how you communicate that through Schoology with the teachers. What's the process that parents listening, how are they, how is it communicated with them to be encouragers with their child, too, as they're going through this process, to be working with everybody, have access to the different strategies you may be using at home, to facilitate that at home as well with their students, to work in this process collaboratively with the teachers and the school district?
So, for that, our teachers are the ones that communicate that information, because, as you saw, the 696 groups, I work with so many different students, it would be virtually impossible to share every bit of that data. But in one class, I might only be working with one or two kids. So, our teachers can then communicate that information to our parents, and I do hope that that is happening, because we do talk a lot about that sense of ownership and that collaboration. And I know that our teachers really work hard to communicate to their parents. I want this to be another level of that as well, and to provide, what I have as a follow-up for our teachers, as a follow-up for parents as well. And it's kind of funny, too, because Allison is in charge of our FRAME Club, and with my FRAME Club group, I send that direct message to my kids and to their parents. Meg, can you explain what that is? Sure. Sure. The FRAME Club is our Franklin Regional After School Math and ELA program. Got it. And so, that is, again, based on data. Allison and I at the intermediate worked on that data together to form groups of students that might need extra support after school. And there are teachers, certified teachers, that are providing the after-school tutoring on campus, and they're small groups. So, my group has six, but I don't think any have more than that. And we communicate to our parents what we're doing and how they can continue the work at home. But just as that's going on, I would also hope that, you know, that's also going on with our teachers. And I know that Dr. Buffon is a proponent of that. He wants that communication to be happening from that level, just because it would be, I think, almost impossible for me. I can, I can get it so far, and then, the teachers can take it to that next level, which the teachers have been so, so incredible, because this is so different and so new. And they've received it just in such a positive way, and they know that it's working, and they see that it's working, and I know how hard they're working. So, we're, we're all in this together, so that communication piece is vital. Any other questions?
First of all, thank you so much. As a parent, I appreciate the role that you have in our schools and the impact that MTSS is having for all students. MTSS is having for all students, from those who may need remediation, through those who may need enrichment. The reality is, we utilize our ESR funds to create some opportunities for students, to ensure that all students are, their needs are being met. And when you hear about ELA instruction and math instruction, the old saying is, reading is rocket science. And a research-based approach to reading instruction is critical. And I was so happy to hear you talk about that. And you look at, if you listen to the work, or read the work in the National Reading Panel, and the research has happened since that groundbreaking report from 20 years ago, it really is hitting reading in those five key areas. Phenemic awareness, which is sounds, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. We know that students need reading instruction in its entirety, and that we need assessments, or benchmarks, or ways to see when they're not reaching those benchmarks. And then, from a district standpoint, we need to be able to put in place those types of opportunities for remediation and acceleration that students need. It is, that was one of our goals when I came here 10 years ago. And opportunistically, we're there. And the work that is being done here is based in research, is based upon building foundational skills in students. And it's a testament to the work that you're doing, not only with students, but also in supporting our teachers in their ongoing growth and instruction. A lot of people ask, you know, what's an MTSS coordinator? I think I couldn't have done a better job of explaining it than you did tonight, in terms of why that's so important. And people may say, oh, actually, we have the same amount of administrators today as we had two years ago. But the reality is, you know, Dr. Smith's title is a little bit different, in that it now includes the Support Services and Director of Instruction. It's to support that work. The work that is happening is so critical and so complex, and it's work that happened a decade ago, but now is happening at the highest level, to remove barriers to learning for all kids, and then begin talking about ways that we can get kids to accomplish more than they even thought ever possible. And I have to commend you, as well as Mrs. Folio, for the work that, and Dr. Raffone, for the work that has happened in providing those supports for our kids. And if you hear it, when we talked about it, it's every place, everywhere. So now, we're talking about learning that happens in the summertime to meet those needs. We're talking about learning that happens during the school day to meet those needs. And we're talking about learning that happens after school to meet those needs. And when you look at this, in the, there was a time when those students on that bar graph may have been referred for testing for special education. Some would have qualified, some would not have. But the reality now is, we're out to meet the needs of every kid when they need it. And over time, if there isn't growth, and we've changed the intervention, the research-based intervention, we, it gives us an indicator that we need to, we may need to do some additional, more intensive testing. It is building a system around meeting the needs of kids. So I want to thank, thank all the folks that are working so hard to make that happen.
Thank you very much.
I think, before we move on to the next subject, one of the important things that we've talked about in our curriculum meetings is that the flexibility that you talked about, for a parent to see their child referred to this is not something negative. This is something positive that the district is doing and trying to do for your child. Because I look back, I had a successful career in, you know, a scholastic career, but I had gaps. I had learning gaps myself, and they were hard to overcome. The effort of this is for all of our students to minimize those gaps through what we're measuring, through the different things that these tests, these star, the dibbles, and the different feedbacks that we're getting. So don't look at it as a negative thing, look at it as a positive, as a parent, that this, the district reaching out and trying to proactively help you close those gaps with your child, and make every effort to do that. That's what this is about. It's not something negative, it's a positive. If you would, if a teacher would reach out to you for this, so, because as you said, this is, can be a temporary thing. You, your child could be in this for a few months, find the enrichment they need, close that gap, and be back out and thriving.
Absolutely. We want it to be a positive.
And it's interesting, because the research says that MTSS, for it to be most effective, isn't geared to be a two- or three-year type of process. It's shorter in duration, with the, and because it's research-based and prescriptive, with the intervention that students need, in a timely manner, so to ensure their continued growth.
Lucy, thank you very much.
Can I just add one thing? I, thank you, Meg. I appreciate all that you do, you know that. And I wanted to also mention that Allison Smith has coordinated, let me just hold that. Allison Smith has also coordinated not only our summer program for tutoring, but also the after-school program that began at the intermediate at the beginning of the year, and we just started at the primary building as well, a week ago. And we are looking to increase our offerings through, up and through eighth grade for this coming summer. And I just wanted to recognize all of our teachers who are not only a part of our PLC work and our MTSS work, but who have offered their time after school as well, to provide that tutoring. And so, thank you to Allison, and thank you to all of the teachers who, who are willing to help our kids beyond their regular workday. So I just wanted to make sure to notice that.
Wouldn't work without them. Thank you again. Still not.
And Mr. Yangley, that finally concludes the superintendent's report for this year.
Thank you, Dr. Pirano. Okay, we're moving on to public comments. Helen Elliott.
Helen Elliott, I live at 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville. And I, I thank you all for your service. I really do appreciate that. I was looking over the upcoming things that are going to be covered, and I had a bunch of questions about different things. So I'm just going to go through, because I know you can't put your hand up as somebody's presenting and ask a question. So, under Agenda Items, number four, the FRSD Health and Safety Plan. On page four, I'm wondering, does that mean that COVID-19 vaccinations are given at school? So that's my question on that one. On number nine, Budget Transfers, Mr. Perry, page 32, what is Parents as Allies? I have never heard of that, so I was wondering what that was. And then, there's a lot of travel costs in there, and I'm kind of curious as to what's included in travel costs. Under number 10, Technology Budget, I would like to emphasize that we are in much need of new microphones, to be used for the school musicals and whatever else they use them for. I have attended school musicals for year after year, and there's always been a problem hearing what's going on. I understand that Friday nights program, they kind of went out. So, so I'm, all for that. Let's get some new microphones for the, for the school musicals, and I'm sure they're used for other things as well. Number 15, Dr. Delp, Frontline Education Contract, I'm curious as to what, what that is. And that's it. That's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
I'm going to address your COVID vaccinations in schools. We don't give them in schools. We put forth a resolution, I don't know, what, two, two years ago?
A year and a half ago.
That, yeah, we, we did it at a board meeting, public board meeting. We don't give those vaccinations in schools.
We actually don't give any vaccinations in school. We're not in the vaccination business. People need to do that, they can go see their PCP or, you know.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to Schlisher's comments.
I have no comments for public session, Mr. President.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, Agenda Items.
Your first agenda item is the approval of the conceptual physics class at the senior high school following the 30-day public review.
Any questions on physics? Novel approval.
The second agenda item is also after a 30-day public review of the seventh-grade English novel.
Did we have people come and look at the novel?
No.
No? Nobody from the public came to look at the novel?
I think we had, we had a personal ask meeting, it was in favor of the book, thought it was very good. Okay, number three, Westmoreland County Student Assistance.
This is an annual agreement with Westmoreland County for our Student Assistance Program Enhanced Liaison. At this time, the county is currently covering all costs for this enhanced SAP liaison.
Questions on Westmoreland County Student Assistance? Okay, the Health and Safety Plan.
This is a revision to the previously approved plan, and the only change that has occurred to this version is the removal of the contact tracing statement, because we are no longer required to contact trace.
Any questions on Health and Safety Plan? Okay, Franklin Regional School District's Flexible Instruction Day Plan.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first opportunity to talk in front of you guys, so thank you so much for this time. So we are looking, in July of 2020, you did an approval for the FID days, Flexible Instruction Days. It was a three-year plan. Each year was asking for the state for five days of flexible instruction. We're also looking to do that again for another three-year cycle, five days a year. The application process looks at some narratives, that looks at how the district is going to communicate the plan, how the district will instruct the students in case of a FID day. Typically, a FID day is weather-related or some other emergency-related item that students would not be able to come into the brick-and-mortar setting. In addition to the narratives, we're looking at how students with an IEP or 504 will be addressed. So I'm working on the narratives, as long as you guys give me approval this evening, to finalize those narratives, get those shared out to the administrators, so they can review that, to make sure what we're looking to do is very consistent with the last three years. And then, in addition to the narratives, we also have to provide exemplar lessons in ELA, math, social studies and science, K to, K to eight, and then nine to 12 at the high school level. Do you guys have any questions with that process?
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perry, Electricity Procurement Gradification.
Good evening. The next two items that I'll be presenting both relate to energy costs. Seems like every month, I'm providing some type of an update regarding new agreements, but I guess that's the nature of a volatile market. Both of these agreements relate to the heritage service location. One is for the electricity, one is for the natural gas. Both are six-month agreements for that particular service location. Positive news in that both are at rates that are less than what we were looking at several months ago. The electricity agreement is 6.25 cents per kilowatt hour, which is about half of what we were coming off of with the previous six-month agreement. And the natural gas agreement's at $2.70 per decotherm, which is only slightly above the historical lows that we were purchasing, purchasing gas at previously. So, positive news on those two agreements.
Any questions on those two items? Gifts, Grants, and Donations.
Yes, this month, we have $407 to the school's Fund-A-Meal Program from FR staff contribution and an anonymous donor.
Questions, Gifts, Grants, and Donations, Budget Transfers?
Finally, we have general fund transfers totaling $12,408.51 for this month. Just as a reminder, these are just budget transfers, so changing the account code where funds may have been budgeted last year, when you adopted a budget, to where it was actually spent this year. I don't have all the details readily available, just looking at the account codes, I can tell you that it relates to some band competitions. So we frequently have students that attend PMEA competitions, that they qualify to continue on. NFBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America State Competition, and as well as our first robotics team competing, and the entrance fee is related to that. So those are some of the larger items for the budget transfers this month.
Any questions on budget transfers?
And that would account for the transfers in, in travel costs?
Right. Yeah, there's travel associated with all three of those items, so not something that we can specifically identify, you know, almost a year in advance, but there's money set aside to account for such things when our students qualify.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Schreckengas, Technology Budget.
Good evening. I have five agenda items to present tonight. The first agenda item is the Technology Budget for the 23-24 school year. I am going to go over some, a high level on, on this budget, and go over most of the stuff. A lot of the stuff is on the refresh recycle for purchasing equipment. I'm going to touch on the big, the big ticket items in this budget. The first item are Chromebooks. I just want to point out that typically, to sustain our one-to-one program, we would need to purchase around 600 Chromebooks per year. This year, we're only going to purchase 300, because two years ago, we received 1,500, 1,500 Chromebooks from the ECF Fund, the Emergency Connectivity Fund. So we still are in pretty good shape with inventory on the Chromebooks. The second item is High School Wireless Upgrade. That project is going to be done with E-rate. We will receive, following the procedures for E-rate, total cost of that project. Digital signage, we plan to, this is something new for the high school and the middle school. With the renovation of the elementary buildings and the building of the new building, we put in digital signage. We're going to bring those buildings into the digital signage, into our arena. We already bought the server and the ground, that laid the groundwork. So now, we just have to buy TVs, TV panels, and the display module for the back of them. Promethium panels, this purchase of the Promethium panels, we'll be able to purchase around 40 Promethium panels. For the high school and middle school, we will be able to finish the high school out and start the middle school with the Promethium panels. Right now, those schools are using Promethium boards that were put in in 2007, so they're pretty old, and it's time that they need to get replaced. Next item are the high school and middle school auditoriums. As was mentioned this evening, we have some significant issues with sound, audio in those two places. This is going to help us straighten out all the issues out. Some of that equipment in those auditoriums are anywhere from 10, eight to 10 years old. Switches, our network switches are at end-of-life. We need to replace all the switches, except for the elementary. We need to replace the, the core switches for the district, and we need to place all the switches in the high school and at the middle school. We have a couple of years to do that. They're still under warranty, but they are end-of-life, which means we need to get them replaced as soon as possible, before they go out of warranty. That project will also be E-rate, and we will receive 40% back on that project, total cost of that project. Last item I have are the doc cams and wireless keyboards. Those go along with the new Promethium panels. The doc, current document cams we have will not work with the new panels. Some of them won't work, so we need to purchase new document cameras. Does anybody have any questions on the Technology Budget?
Technology Budget, that's it?
Next, the next two items I already spoke of is the project for the high, high school wireless and the network switches. I brought the quotes, so the exact costs are in your packet for those two items. Those need to be approved tonight. We have deadlines that we have to meet to follow the E-rate procedures. We have to file, we have to get this approved, and signed, and sent into E-rate. We have to file, we have to get this approved and signed and sent into E-rate in the next couple of days.
Questions on wireless?
Next item is managed service provider. This is our tech support, this is the renew of our standard tech support contract with our current provider. We've been working with them for this year. They have been doing a pretty good job. We're still working on some transition items, but overall, we've been very satisfied with their support.
Any questions?
Last item I have is the redesign of our website. We are looking to do a redesign on our website, refresh, change the look, the feel, and increase some features that will go along with our website. There is the cost for this, it's a three-year agreement. The cost is actually the same that we've been paying now. They will help us migrate the content and help us do an implementation.
Questions on website?
As far as the look and the feel, are you bringing in people from the community to help understand? I mean, there have been questions where people can't find certain things or the searching capability.
I can speak a little bit to that, Tina Gillan, the Communications Director. Mr. Schreckengoss and I are working on the proposal for the redesign. And I think the idea there, one is that the current design is approximately, from the time they started to work on that until it went live, is between five and seven years old. Some of the concerns that we've had with that website are ease of navigation, being able to find things. Those are some consistent things that we've heard. So there are a few items that we wanted to address through the redesign. One of them is to continue with our branding process, but be able to showcase better our vision and our goals for the district, to focus on the five Cs, to be able to make it more mobile-friendly and more family and user-friendly for people in the community. We think that by restructuring or working on that architecture, that we will be able to improve that process to a high degree. Any other questions?
So, I deal with technology all the time, and technology people design technology with technology people. But we have real people looking at this prior to it going live, being involved in the design piece?
Yes, we have not had our first meeting, obviously waiting to see if the board gives their approval for us to move forward, but we would have a committee of people, and we definitely want to include students and parents in that process and community members. Their feedback and input on the user end is critical to how we design that, because ultimately, the idea is for those people to be able to get the information they need quickly and easily.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's really important. I hear that constantly from people. They're like swimming and they can't find anything. So thank you for inviting, and I say to the public, bring your questions so that when we put this all together, all questions do get answered and none don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Delp?
Good evening, everyone. The first item I bring to you is frontline education contract. Typically, this is a recurring expenditure for the school district. This program, just as a recap, it is our way of managing our absenteeism for our staff, our paid time off, vacation time. It allows us to track applications, our hiring and recruitment process. It also is a house for our professional learning development for all of our staff. It tracks the hours and all of the opportunities that staff look to seek for their own professional development, as well as tuition reimbursements. And it also has a link to our payroll office with a lot of our timesheets and those types of functionalities. So it is a large web-based system that helps us with all of the functions of the Human Resources Department. And again, typically, this is a recurring cost year to year, but through consulting with Mr. Perry, we saw that the increase from one year to the next was going to be significant. That increase was going to be 7.5%. It was going to cost us next year $37,840. The contract, if we were to go into a multi-year contract, it would be a first-year reduction of approximately $700. The increase would cap the advantage of going to a potential contract. The increase would cap at 5%, and to account for any additional increases that may occur due to inflationary pressures. However, the benefit would also be that if it were less than 5%, we would be able to take advantage of that lesser increase in fund as well. If not, this would be a 7.5% increase going into next year. Now, we wouldn't enter this contract until the summer. Our current agreement ends in June, so we would have time to be able to continually monitor this process as well, knowing that we're also looking at student information systems. And some of those student information systems have add-on programs that allow us to track and monitor some of these similar functionalities. So as that process commences, we'll be able to consider whether or not those would be economically feasible and a proper trade-off from functionality and a cost standpoint.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Policy Review.
Policy Review, this is a second read of the policies. The 236.1 Threat Assessment, 805 Emergency Preparedness and Response, and Policy 805.2 School Security Personnel.
Questions on policy? Thank you.
And the last item I have for you are our personnel agendas, looking at our certified support and supplemental personnel positions, including our appointments and transfers, leaves of absence, and substitutes.
Just one note, under the supplemental personnel for appointments and transfers, line item nine, D and E are the same name listed. Just want to make sure we're not paying somebody twice, but I'm sure it's just a clerical thing, but just to note it.
Great point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Rogowski.
Good evening. I have two agreements for your consideration. The first is the Washington Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement, also known as WISC, in Sharpsburg for their 22-23 school year. And the second agreement is with Pace Schools. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second by Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seven zero. Okay, we're going to, anybody have to get on the break? We're going to move right into the Franklin Board of School Directors for the regular voting meeting for March 2020. Stanford salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community, strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Real call, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Mederator?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Kromsky?
Here.
Mr. Kizlosky?
Here.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Here.
Mr. Yangling?
Here.
Mr. Yan and Dr. Eshelman Ramey are absent this evening.
Okay, seven present, two absent. Okay, I need approval for the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting for February 13th, 2023, in a regular meeting of February 13th of 2023. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mark.
Second.
Second by Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Okay, reports, future updates, and upcoming topics, Dr. Pirino.
For future dates, on April 3rd, 2023, we will have a committee of the whole meeting and a regular board meeting at 7:30 PM here at the Murraysville Municipal Building at 4100 Sardis Road. On April 19th, 2023, we will have a Finance 20 meeting at 5 PM in the administrative offices, which is the former Newlinsburg Elementary. On April 26th, we will have a Policy Committee meeting at 5 PM in the administrative offices. Upcoming topics include gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers, and personnel. And that concludes...
Future updates and upcoming topics. Thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report for February 2023. Need a motion? Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, seven zero. List of bills, paid bills, general fund, $589,969.06. Athletic fund, $3,748.49. A total of paid bills of $593,717.55. Unpaid bills, general fund, $888,256.48. Technology fund, $49,995.80. Capital reserve fund, $120,996.53. Athletic fund, $23,603.35. For a total of unpaid bills of $1,082,852.16. With a grand total of paid bills and unpaid bills of $1,676,569.71. Food services of $158,773.36. For a grand total, including food service, of $1,835,343.07. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved, Vince?
Second.
Second, Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Public comments, we had none for the committee, for the regular voting meeting. Solicitors' comments?
No comments for public sessions.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any comments about consent agenda items we're going to move on to? And we have one through 19 consent agenda items.
A motion to approve a consent agenda items, one through 19.
Moved by...
Second.
Second by Diana. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, Ed?
Second.
I'm sorry. Second.
Second.
Ed. All right.